Good evening and welcome to the November 15th meeting of the Town Council. If you'll kindly rise and join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I apologize for our late start. Under announcements, the only thing I have is the town office will be closed Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 23rd, in observance of Thanksgiving. The transfer station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and will be open normal hours on Friday and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The council meets the first and third Thursday of the months of November and December, and our December meetings are Thursday, December 6th at 7:00 p.m. and Thursday, December 20th at 7:00 p.m., both here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen, do you have any announcements?
The tax bills, December tax bills, have been released and are due on Friday, December 7th. Property owners who have not received their bill should contact the Tax Collector's Office to arrange for a duplicate. The Merrimack Police Department, again, is a drop-off site for toy donations going to Mighty Max's Mega Toy Drive. Please stop by the station any time of day to donate a new toy for this fantastic toy drive. All donations will be delivered to the Jimmy Fund Clinic and Boston Children's Hospital for those children who cannot be home for the holidays. There are only 15 days left, so hurry down today. And I would also like to say that I think people would be absolutely amazed if they knew how much time and time off and all those kinds of things that the police department, the fire department, Public Works to some extent, but the police department and fire department are deeply involved with charities and community events, and it's very impressive. I don't think people know how many. So, the Merrimack Police Department wants to remind everyone that the winter parking ban begins tonight at midnight. So, there are no vehicles allowed on the public roadways during the overnight hours. The Parks and Recreation Department invites you to join them on Sunday, December 2nd, for the 25th Annual Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting. The scheduled events for the day include a candy cane scavenger hunt at Twin Bridge Park from 2:00 through 30:00 p.m. Holiday Parade will begin at 3:00 at the Commons Shopping Plaza. The lighting of the Christmas tree will be at approximately 3:45 p.m. with the arrival of Santa Claus. The tree lighting will feature band and musical performances, a reading of "Twas the Night Before Christmas" by Santa and Mrs. Claus, and photos with Santa. So, there's more information on the Parks and Recreation website. Also, join the Parks and Recreation Department on Saturday, December 17th at 10:00 a.m. at Wasserman Park for the Second Annual Turkey Scavenger Hunt and compete for a chance to win a turkey for Thanksgiving. We will be hiding 12 turkey-shaped cutouts throughout Merrimack. Your job is to find as many cutouts as you can. The first three participants to return to Wasserman Park with all stamps collected will win a 16-pound Thanksgiving turkey. Price is $5 per family. All participants must be preregistered. And again, Matt Casperius again with his fabulous ideas, and people come. I think he said the Easter egg hunt was, I don't know, 800 people or something like that.
Yeah. It is incredible. Thanks, Eileen. Next is Highway Garage Project Update. Paul, did you want to speak there?
We got some discouraging news this week with the timeline. Looks like we're about a week behind schedule due to all the inclement weather we had in the spring and over the summer with the rains. They were hoping really to get the garage back on track so we could move in around Thanksgiving, but as it turns out, we're going to be about a week delayed. The garage is coming along. Windows are in, starting with the interior doors. We walked through it on Wednesday, and a lot of the fit-up is beginning. Now, it's a lot of finish work that's going on. They were polishing the floor, setting up the locker rooms, things of that sort. The garage bays are all in except for one set of garage doors, and it's the very top of those doors that will be in earlier next week. And then, what will happen is that they're hoping to get people to continue to work over the weekends, and they're pushing that we get in earlier. But it looks like it's going to be the first week of December, and hopefully tonight's white stuff that's planned to come won't start and continue forever, so we can get the guys and DPW moved over to the new building. Once that occurs, we'll be looking at doing the demo in the old Highway Garage and utilizing that for our truck storage and hopefully interior demo on that. And there, I believe there's two extra doors that are going to be added to that facility so that it's easy to drive through, but we're hoping to get that started in January. We had a roofer scheduled for this next week. I don't know if he was able to get in there a couple of days early, but he was scheduled for next week to come in and do the roof on the old garage, shore that up, and the sighting is scheduled to take place in January. So, the project's moving along. We're about a week behind to get the people in, but hopefully we'll have everything next meeting, we'll be able to tell you, yeah, we're moving in over the weekend, so.
Thank you, Paul. Peter?
Paul, and maybe Kyle can answer this. It's just, once everything's complete, do we intend to have an open house to invite the community into taking over the facility?
Yes, actually, we were waiting. We're probably going to do it in April. That's when the open house for Highway is. We're going to do it then. We'll be totally complete with the old building and the new building. We might have a soft opening, so to speak, for the new building, once that, in December timeframe, to open that building and the council and a couple of, you know, pitchers and things of that sort with the workers down there. But I think we're going to have a full-blown opening during the open house in April of 2019.
Thanks.
Thanks, Peter.
Sorry, May. May of 2019, not April.
Anybody have anything for the questions? Comments from the press and public? Wendy knows she can sit here or stand there, whatever you prefer.
Wendy Thomas, Tinewall, Cat Falls. What happened to the PFC on the agenda? Is that?
We took it off. When there's updates, Sarita, who actually is here this evening, but we'll be bringing those to our attention, we'll actually be having agenda items dealing with those things.
Okay, so as needed?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I would suggest that a lot's going to be happening in the near future, so it might be prudent to put it back on, although it could go under legislative update as well.
Yep.
But there's other things that...
Congratulations.
But anyway, so there's a few things. So, number one, in the Foster's, November 7th, 2018, there was an article called "Pappas Drinking Water Issues a Priority." And this is from the article, just one paragraph. "Pappas also vowed to put New Hampshire's drinking water issues at the top of his to-do list, saying he will push to get, quote, 'the answers that families deserve' around Coakley, around Pease, and in Merrimack. PFCs are being detected in groundwater all over New Hampshire. We've got to understand the health risks that exist for families and ensure that blood testing is available, that we're able to clean up the contamination. It involves having an EPA that is going to be responsive." The exciting thing about that is that finally Merrimack is being recognized as contaminated as Peasly and Coakley. So, the work that we're all doing is being recognized. During the campaign, Nancy, Kathy, Rosemarie, and I met with Chris Pappas at DW Diner, and we explained the whole situation, and it's just really exciting to finally hear that we're being recognized. So, good work on your end, good work on Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, good work on everybody's part. I mean, we're getting the message out there, finally, so that's good. Speaking of which, we had a community meeting at the library last night. 16 people showed up, and we've got some action items in town to sort of get the ball rolling and get some water changes. We, the Democratic representatives that were elected, we just had our caucus today at the State House, and we're reaching out to Nashua, Amherst, Bedford, Litchfield, and the Manchester Representatives. We're going to be meeting with all of them because the water is spreading, the contamination is spreading, and they're going to be, they need to know about this. I've talked to some representatives that don't know about the situation. So, we're getting the news out, and we're getting some help, and we're shaking hands with a lot of people, and I think things will be positive. My last issue, not issue, my last comment, I have a question, and I don't even know if it's appropriate to ask it, but I'm on the Merrimack Ethics Committee. Is there a conflict of interest, being a House Rep as well?
I don't think so. No? I don't believe there is.
Okay.
We've had other representatives on other committees, such as our trustee of trust funds and other committees, and there's never been a problem.
Okay, that's great.
It doesn't interfere with your schedule?
No, no, I know, that's good. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
Anybody further who would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none. There's no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, no appointments, no public hearings, legislative updates. We have three who are too soon to be, but not right now, so. Town manager report.
I just have one thing, and that is, I wanted to let you know that we, Becky had reached out to the school board, Marge Chaffrey, and suggested that the school board go ahead and authorize the use of their claims data to combine our health insurance for the purposes of coming up with an estimate if we all combined our health insurance. And I'm pleased to say that at the next, the following meeting, the school board brought it up and approved that. So, we will be getting that information together, and then they will give us estimated rates.
Mr. Chair. Eileen, that's good news, and I really think that the school board should be commended. I know that our joint meeting, Board Member Andy Schneider brought this up. I was very happy about it, and I think that this is a great show of cooperation between two governing bodies that oversee the town. So, again, I think they really should be commended on this.
It is going to be potentially beneficial. Thanks, Peter. All right, there's no consent agenda, but what I'd like to do before we have Nicholas come up, I'd like to move the appointment forward, just because that'll be quick and Kevin won't be bored sitting here all evening, if, without any objection. So, I'd like to move under new business item number one up. It's the council to consider the appointment of Kevin Cottro to the Technology Committee as a full member.
I move we appoint Kevin Cottro, Technology Committee, as a full member.
You need your...
I move that we appoint Kevin Cottro as a full member per Charter Article 6-4.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Kenning, second by Nancy. And before we do get started, I have neglected to say that Counselor Boyd and Counselor Thornton have been excused this evening, and if you're here for item number two under new business, not item number two, item number two under old business, that's been put off, it won't be happening this evening, so. Tom, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just that we did have a chance to interview Kevin. He's got a lot of great information about technology and infrastructures and things like that. I think he'll be an asset to the town, and he's volunteered his time, and that's a tremendous asset for us, so we're happy to have him.
Great. Yeah, I was, I know enough about technology to take care of myself, and so it appears that he does have a lot to offer, barely. So, there was Nancy's second. Okay, any further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, it's 5-0-0.
Yep.
And Kevin, if you could join me up here and get you sworn in.
Is, raise right-handed. Just with this. Into the mic. Please. I, Kevin Cottro, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent of me as a full member of the Technology Committee according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the law, of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So, help me God.
Appreciate it. What we need here, we have to give you the... Is that to you?
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much for the indulgence. We're going to go to item number one under old business. Is the council to consider the recommendation of media service coordinator Nick LaValle to form an ad hoc group for the purpose of meeting and preparing suggestions regarding the cable television franchise agreement? Yes?
Excuse me, Nicholas, but to kind of frame this, this, so, we really have certain things to consider. One, we have to consider the cable TV franchise agreement, with which we don't have a lot of latitude. Then, a lot of ideas came up through Nicholas and Justin and some other citizens about moving forward with other types of projects that have nothing to do with that. And third, there was some other ideas about Internet, you know, and that kind of thing. So, we, so Nicholas has an idea for that. So, this isn't about the cable contract. It's about, go.
Okay, yeah, to put all that, and I appreciate that.
Sure. I mean, what I would like to, what I would like to do is I'd like to form an ad hoc group comprised of three Merrimack residents and a member of the Merrimack Town Council. The purpose is to just prepare suggestions, take the suggestions that have been forwarded, that have been mentioned at these meetings, and just sort of prepare them and formalize them to submit to legal counsel so that the council can then be ready to review the franchise agreement that's due to expire in January.
Okay, and in this group, Nicholas, because that Eileen mentioned that, it's something that I was hoping to bring forward. Because we have so little latitude when it comes to this franchise agreement, you know, the Internet component in particular is something I'm very interested in, looking into for a municipally operated situation, and I, you know, whether or not it's feasible, I have no idea, but I was wondering if your group would be able to, you know, participate in that and tackle that at the same time.
Sure.
Okay, because, and if that's the case, one of the council members, unless the five of us here would have the right of first refusal, but if, I was thinking, Counselor Boyd's always been, you know, excited about this section, and I, you know, I haven't spoken to him, so I don't know if he even wants to do it, but I, if nobody here wanted to do it, I'd, you know, I'd be interested. Barbara, would you?
I am appointed to the Technology Committee, so.
Of course. Yeah, it makes perfect sense.
If it's okay with the guys.
I'd give it all back, absolutely. No, that'd be perfect, and I apologize for that. I did.
Okay, so just to be clear, that we're all, what we're all talking about is not a lot of work will be done on the cable franchise, TV franchise agreement, because there's not a lot of latitude. But this group is going to help with additional services, enhanced services for the media division, and Nicholas, if the group, and he concur, they'll be bringing those ideas forward to you to, you know, move things along, as, you know, like Nicholas had talked about, better reception, HD, and all that kind of thing. And then, there'll be the component above the Internet and see if there's something that we can do, maybe meet with another community. I believe Keene is doing it, so maybe they could go down to Keene or bring somebody from Keene and talk about the whole Internet aspect, and whether or not that pans out or not is...
The only question I have is that this is due for January 1st or thereabouts in January?
The cable franchise agreement is due to expire January 8th.
Okay. So, is there enough time to do all this, to get a group together, to actually go through what the agreement is going to be and have it ready for?
Well, like Eileen said.
Legal review.
There's only so much that we can ask from a cable provider, so this would also include these extra ideas that were brought up during the discussions that we had at the public hearing.
For instance, some of the things that Barbara mentioned, that she actually read it, God bless you, so, you know, talking about distance from the poles and that kind of thing, that other communities have gotten, some of those other ideas. And then, Paul and Nicholas are going to kick me if they could reach me, the talk was also maybe to reduce the franchise fee that gets passed on to the consumer, with the understanding that the pot is diminishing, although it hasn't. It hasn't. But it, we expect with the cord cutters, just learned a new phrase, that the, you know, the money will be drying up there, and then to reduce the, to reduce the franchise fee also would reduce it again.
There's...
But just to let you know that there is a pretty sizable amount of money in what we would refer to as fund balance. We're digging into that right now as we continue to use $250,000 a year for, to put into the general fund, but there's, right, so there'll be a period of time where we'll have some leeway, but it won't be forever.
And currently, as of, right now, the FCC is proposing that there's a change to rulemaking on cable franchising, so that's happening right now. They had public comment open until yesterday with responses due in December. So, as I mentioned in our, in our public hearing and the presentation that I gave, this industry has changed drastically since our last franchise negotiation, and it's still changing drastically and very quickly. So, I think that it's important that not only do we execute a franchise renewal sometime as soon as the, as it's set to expire, but also have a group to discuss just, just all of these extra and new sort of changes that have happened in this industry and what residents have expected from the media division and what they'd like to see in terms of Internet services.
Paul?
The contract is expiring January 8th. However, there's a clause in the current contract that it stays in working order until a new contract is agreed to between the parties. So, I don't want the people in Merrimack saying, oh, my God, after the 8th, we don't have a, no, we still have a contract. We just, that's, when this 10 years is up, if it takes us 10 more days, the 18th of January, we'll be, just, we have a contract until a new contract is made.
Thank you, Paul.
Could you summarize in three words or less what you just mentioned about what's going on with legislature?
With the FCC, well, there, the documents Further Notice of Proposed Rulemaking on Cable Franchising. And one of the things that, that will work in favor of the cable company is that they will, they could potentially charge back expenses over franchise fees, or what municipalities are getting in-kind now, such as cable services to municipal buildings, or infrastructure relative to INET, how we're able to go live, and even the channels themselves. They could assign a value to the channels themselves and consider that as an expense versus our franchise fees.
So, they would consider that payment?
Potentially, yes.
The value of it?
Potentially.
So, it's not, none of the things that are being proposed are in a town's favor, they're in the cable's favor? Or are there any?
Very, very much so.
Okay.
It's in favor of the cable company. I sent later, late this afternoon, I did, I did send the town manager, and I copied Paul and Becky Thompson on, on an email with that document, and then also three different news pieces, and it's very new. This has happened in the past three days. There's been some press given on it. In fact, some of them are from today and yesterday, so. So, that's something else that this, that this group can talk about.
I do have a question, but it's unrelated to this, but I'll wait till this is all done.
Actually, somebody's mic, somebody's mic's not on.
Barbara.
Yes, I jumped.
I'm trying to be calm for you. So, yeah, I think that you should just make a simple motion to establish the ad hoc committee as Nicholas just described, which he can repeat, and that Barbara will be the town's representative.
And the three citizens.
So.
And seconded by?
Seconded.
Okay, motion by Counselor Albert, and seconded by Counselor Harrington.
And I guess the three citizens would be...
I know, I, I know of somebody, and I spoke to you about this gentleman who's, who part of his, you know, business is looking into those things.
Yeah, and we're like wide open to any of that, and if it ends up being, you know, four or something like that, because we have four qualified citizens, then it could be that.
Should we have them notify?
They should notify Nicholas.
Notify Nicholas?
Or, how about me? Have them notify me.
All right, so we'll make that out, and however we notice that normally, if that's what it's like.
We'll notice it, we'll put it on the website. So, basically, anybody, we're going to have a committee, and we just described what the committee was going to be about. It's going to have maybe a beginning and an end, maybe not, but we welcome anyone, any citizen who wants to get involved in this. It'll be, have to do with Internet service, and it'll have to do with enhancements to what we have, we offer here from the media division and, you know, what they do. And we welcome you to call my office, Town Manager's Office, 424-2331, for anybody that's interested, or if any of you know somebody that might be interested, you might give them a call as well. We'll put it on the website.
All right. Yeah, within the next two weeks, I mean, because it's, January's right around the corner, so. All right, so you can plan your first meeting whenever you want, but I'll, we'll do that. We'll make sure, now you know people interested, so.
Yeah, and there was two individuals that spoke that I know would be interested, and I've talked with a couple of times over the past six weeks or so.
Yeah, perfect. All right, so we'll do that. So, if everybody's...
And we welcome you to call my office, Town Manager's Office, 424-2331, for anybody that's interested. Or if any of you know somebody that might be interested, you might give them a call as well. We'll put it on the website.
Yeah, within the next two weeks. I mean, because it's, January's right around the corner, so.
Right.
All right, so you can plan your first meeting whenever you want, but I'll, we'll do that, we'll make sure, now you know people interested, so.
Yeah, and there was two individuals that spoke that I know would be interested and I've talked with.
Yeah.
A couple of times over the past six weeks or so.
Yep, perfect. All right, so we'll do that. So if everybody's comfortable with that kind of laissez-faire committee thing, yeah. All the questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
And the only question I have before I leave, and I apologize for bringing it up here, but I keep on forgetting. There are a lot of people complaining about the volume of our meetings, that no matter what they do with their set, they can't get the volume up. It's not been one person, it's been several.
Is it, I think we have to get close to the mic, is what it boils down to.
Maybe too far away.
And I have a bad habit of that. I think it really has to be that much closer.
Is that relative to a town council meeting?
Yeah. They don't have a problem with the school board. When they use, when they, I'm gonna be right here. When they use these, these resources, they don't have a problem. It's only the town council meetings.
Well, there's other meetings that meet in here as well, so that surprises me, because there's, there's so many other meetings that meet.
Right. So you think the resources are the same? So the only, it's really just us?
I think, I don't know.
I mean, it could be. The other thing, too, is that we have made some changes in our control room over the past six weeks. We have started uploading our planning board meetings in high definition. This meeting tonight will be in high definition.
So that might.
On YouTube tomorrow.
Oh, God, you had to tell us that.
That was supposed to be a big surprise, but I guess I'm gonna bring it up tonight. But it does, it looks, it looks fantastic. And the Agriculture Commission last night as well.
It looks fantastic.
It's on our YouTube channel in HD.
We'll assume that.
I think we'll, we'll just have to focus on getting closer to the mic and see if that solves the problem.
And once again, I, also, I've made it clear that Chris Perez, our part-time media technician, is available for hair and makeup.
But it has to be before the meetings. You tell us now. You had to tell us before the meeting.
There's no close-ups anymore.
Thank you.
It's just, you can't do that.
Yeah, that's an idea.
Close-ups in high def.
Oh, no, it's not pretty.
Ooh, one, two, three, out again. Where's the camera?
All right. Thanks, Nicholas. I appreciate this, and I'm really looking forward to, you know, what comes forward.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Do you need an email from me or anything?
I can get it.
You know how to get it.
I can get it.
That's good. I think he's got it.
I think he's got it.
He knows the way.
All right. Eileen?
So I apologize for this, but I ask you to, if you would please table this MS4 follow-up discussion. And the reasoning is two things. Number one, Bill Boyd is very, Council Boyd is very interested in this particular thing and would like to be here, although this is not why I'm doing this. But, so, so as I had said to you in our budget discussions, that at some point, we're gonna be looking at a public works employee, and then we're gonna be needing to do some, hire some consultants, which I didn't give you a number for because I didn't know. But what we are now looking at it from the perspective of, do we, instead of hiring a consultant to do XYZ for however much money, we're gonna look at it from the perspective of, do we hire an employee? Because it's gonna be ongoing type of work. So we're gonna do that comparison and contrast for you, and we wanna have that ready for you to look at when we're looking at the numbers.
Just for public review, we've mentioned MS4, in 30 words or less, just for public, what does that mean?
Okay, the MS4 is EPA stormwater, stormwater permit that we have to get. And we are one of the only states in the country that have a stormwater permit that is, is not issued by the state. So we have to deal directly with the EPA ourselves. Now, federal EPA. And what has happened is that somebody, some nameless person over at the EPA came up with this blueprint for, you know, heavenly society where everything was clean and fresh, and they plunked down those rules on us. So that our MS4 permit is actually more stringent than the state of California. So we've been through this process of trying to, you know, join together with other states, well, with other, Massachusetts, right? Massachusetts, ourselves, other communities around the state, to try and appeal this. And we have had no luck, and don't expect that we will.
And the state did not want to take it over.
The states gave all kinds, they did not, but they gave all kinds of high numbers about how many people that they had to hire in order to take this over, and it fell on deaf ears.
But a lot of states have decided to take over individually, because.
All of them do, except ourselves, I believe, and New Mexico.
Massachusetts.
And Massachusetts.
And New Mexico.
Massachusetts is filed.
Oh, just, okay. So the point is that we're one of the very few states that have to respond to the federal guidelines, which are super strict, are based on, I understand, if I remember correctly, old data, which is not as correct.
Old state created data.
Correct. So we are responding to like old levels of certain contaminants or whatever, right? So anyway, that, the point is that we're gonna have to be responding to that, and it involves a lot of money.
It does. It involves a lot of money. In the first few years, we should be okay, you know, with interns, but come year three, we'll be looking at at least one employee, and if not two, and some significant consulting fees.
And continual monitoring and all that stuff.
Continual monitoring, and, you know, all the different things. You have to practically, I know I'm being sarcastic tonight, but you have to practically, you know, use a dust buster in your, on the sides of the streets, so that the dirt doesn't get into the stormwater. I mean, it's really bad.
So the techniques.
And let's not forget that I believe it's the third largest city in the state of New Hampshire doesn't have to abide by this.
Oh, yes.
Concord.
Concord does not.
It's the craziest thing in the world.
Because they're Concord.
I don't remember the reason.
The MS4.
Permit?
Yeah.
And of course, it flows down from them to here, so I don't know.
Yeah, so some of the data, which is what I was remembering, some part of the data is based upon stuff we have no control over, because it's coming down from.
Literally.
Literally.
Yep. So that's, so I ask you if you would please table that until the next meeting.
Would somebody?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Barbara, it's seconded by Nancy to table. Item number 200, old business. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, to the next, to the next council meeting.
To next council meeting, does that work?
January, October, December 12, 6th.
Until December 6th, okay. Is that good?
I'm not here, but that's fine.
I mean, for your motion.
Yes.
All right, very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thanks, Eileen. Item number 2 under new business, the council will be presented with a draft proposal of the third phase of upgrades to the facility, wastewater facility to allow the division to maintain its ability to treat the sewer, sorry, to base, to treat the sewer waste stream in a cost-effective manner while meeting the requirements of the Environmental Protection Agency. Here this evening is Kyle and Sarita.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, town councilors, Eileen, Paul. We're pleased to be here tonight to present the next phase of upgrades for what we're proposing at the wastewater treatment facility. We've got a fairly comprehensive PowerPoint presentation for you, and we'd certainly entertain any questions you have during the presentation, and we'd be happy to answer them after as well. Sarita's gonna take the bulk of the presentation, so I will turn it over to her at this point.
Thank you. So one thing I wanted to say before I get started into the presentation was that, is that we at the wastewater treatment plant care deeply about what we do, and we care deeply that we always comply with and/or exceed the expectations associated with our permit, as well as the expectations with the town of Merrimack sewer users. What I'd like to do today is I'd like to briefly review with everybody what we do at the wastewater treatment plant, how we actually treat the wastewater, provide you with a brief history of the upgrades that we've done to date, the goals of this specific project, as well as the project cost, I know everybody's waiting for that one, how we plan to fund it, and then, like Kyle had said, answer any questions both during and after we're done with the presentation. So when we flush the toilet, the water goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and the very first thing that happens is we remove the big stuff from the wastewater. So the big stuff constitutes sticks, stones, and something called wipes. And we'll actually talk a little bit about wipes later on, but all of these things are large objects that if they were to go downstream in the plant, they would cause problems with the infrastructure. After we remove the big stuff, we go to something called primary treatment. And primary treatment removes the particulates, the sand and the soil from the wastewater. We remove about 50% of the sand and soil during primary treatment. Following primary treatment, we go to something called secondary treatment. In secondary treatment, what we remove are the organics and the nutrients. So a nutrient would be something like phosphorus and nitrogen. Organics would be any slew of organics that are in the plant. Organics are primarily removed with the use of microorganisms. Following the removal of the nutrients and the organics, we go to disinfection. So what we do at that point is we add chlorine and we disinfect the wastewater. The goal here is to remove the pathogens, things like E. coli, from the wastewater. Following disinfection, it goes to the Merrimack River. Now concurrent with treating the water, we also remove solids, and we have to actually do something with the solids. So there are two spots in the treatment operations where we actually remove the solids. First is that primary treatment, which is a primary clarifiers, and seconds will be after the secondary treatment or the organics removal is in the secondary clarifiers. And the secondary clarifiers, they have a lot of bugs, and these are the bugs that go to our solids handling facility. I think most of you are familiar with our compost facility, so all those solids, we make into compost. And we actually mix the solids from the wastewater with sawdust to make the, make the compost. If we were to look at the facility we built in 1970, it cost $5 million in 1970 to build that facility, it would be $40 million today. Now, back in 1970, we didn't have the compost facility, we didn't have Thornton's Ferry pump station, we didn't have Sohegan's pump station, and we didn't have various components at the wastewater treatment plant. If we were to build the plant today as it is, it would cost us about $60 million. And the reason why I bring this up is I just wanna give everybody an idea of the value of the infrastructure that we have right now. Now, when we look at our history of upgrades, the first 30 years of the plant, we actually didn't have to do much, because this was a brand-new plant and it was in excellent shape. After the first 30 years, we started to engage in upgrades, and there were two reasons why we engaged in the upgrades. One of them was to enhance the treatment system operations to comply with new permit limits, and the other one was to start replacing some aging infrastructure. So if you take a look at the slide, you'll see that our Phase 1 upgrade was completed in 2007, and that cost us $5 million, or $5.1 million. The HVAC upgrade was completed in 2009, that was $400,000. Our dewatering upgrade was completed in 2012, and that was $2.4 million. And the Phase 2 upgrade was completed in 2017, and that cost us $7.1 million. Now, the Phase 2 upgrade that was presented to you, that included both the main facility and the compost facility. And at the time that the presentation was made on the Phase 2, we actually did talk about upgrading the main pump station. We also talked about upgrading Thornton's Ferry pump station and Sohegan pump station, but it was pushed on for a later phase. So let's look at the goals that we have today, so that, yes.
I didn't ask you this before, and I didn't expect you to know it necessarily off the top of your head, but maybe Kyle will. We did some kind of sewer rate study that included all these phases at one point. So I don't remember when the date was, it was before I got here. A rate study was done that incorporated all of these different phases with corresponding rate increases that we've been doing, although this particular one is costing more. So we're breaking it, basically breaking it down into two components of Phase 3. So, but, so when, when was that study done, Kyle? Or do you know?
That was about 10 years ago.
About 10 years ago.
And what we had done with the sewer rate study is that we looked at what it would take to actually complete all of the upgrades. And at the time, the idea was to perform the upgrades in one, at one time, and what ended up happening is it cost more than we had expected. So we started breaking the projects down as we went. And the same thing happened with the Phase 2 upgrade. It ended up costing more, because when we presented to council at the time, we had not completed the preliminary design yet. And once we completed the preliminary design, we realized that we couldn't include the pump stations into the upgrade. And then there were also components of the compost building that we weren't able to complete.
I have kind of another stupid question, but in other places that I've worked, we had to get rid of the sludge, and sludge was very expensive to get rid of. And now with the compost facility here, we are actually able to use it, combine it with something else, and sell it, and take other people's sludge and get money from them. So there's, you know, the fact that we do the composting is not just for, you know, ecological kind of reasons, but it also is, sludge disposal is a very expensive kind of thing, as well as there aren't, you know, we're running out of options, different wastewater treatment plants are running out of options, just like trash disposal areas are running out of options about what the federal government will allow them to do with sludge or trash or whatever.
And I was gonna echo that analogy. I've been before the council a number of times, mostly during budget seasons over the past couple of years, talking about the higher cost of trash disposal and recycled disposal. It's no different with sludge disposal. It all has to go somewhere, and those somewheres are going away and becoming more restrictive. And just like the MS4, there's more regulations and it's more costly. So the fact that we can take ours, and we take other towns as well, we generate a product that is used fairly widely, and we generate $200,000 in revenues each year, rather than having a cost. So it's a, it's a great program.
It's an excellent program. So for the goal for the project, the number one goal is to replace original equipment to the facility. One of the challenges that we have at the plant with equipment that is now approaching 50 years old is we actually cannot find spare parts to fix the things. We actually will go on eBay to look for spare parts, and in some cases, we'll actually have to contract with a company to make us some of this equipment. So as time goes on, the 50-year-old equipment or the 55-year-old equipment, we actually won't be able to repair some of the stuff. The second goal is to address safety concerns, ongoing safety concerns, and I will point those out as we go through the project. And the third goal is to address code-related deficiencies, both building code and electrical code-related deficiencies. So the moral of the story, pretty much for us, is we wanna replace equipment that is beyond its useful life. I think the folks at the wastewater treatment plant do an amazing job fixing things, and I think Jim once said we could fix anything. And I'd say that's pretty true about the people at the wastewater treatment plant, but there comes a point where it's pretty much impossible to fix anything and to continue effectively and efficiently providing a service to the community, as well as complying with our permit requirements. So permit requirements, as probably everybody now knows, especially with the MS4 situation going on, is that it's an ever-moving target, and EPA is constantly scrutinizing us. So just like with the MS4 permit, we, our permit is with EPA, it is not with the state. And they're always scrutinizing us, always trying to look at lowering our limits like phosphorus, like metals, and other constituents. So before I get into this set of slides, what I'd like to point out to everybody is at the bottom of the page, you'll see Goal 1, Goal 2, and Goal 3. And what those three will tell you if they're checked is that's the reason why we're actually executing that particular upgrade. So the very first thing I'd like to talk to everybody about are those wipes. If anybody's been watching the news lately, they'll know that these flushable wipes are causing a problem throughout the country. What they actually do is a flushable wipe will co-mingle with all sorts of other things in the sewer system, including oil and grease, and they will become big, huge blobs. And they clog everything. They clog pumps, they clog pipes, they clog valves, and they create a great deal of extra And they create a great deal of extra work for all of us. So, what we would like to propose as part of the first step of this upgrade is to construct a new influence screenings building. Now, the screenings building would be a 40-by-32-foot building where we would have an automatic climber-style screener in there. And that's the picture on the right-hand side. That climber-style screener would actually have a wash press with it. And after we rinse out the wipes and dewater them, we would place it in a roll-off container for disposal off-site. And if you look at the bottom, the reason why we have all three checked, age of facility, safety, and code concern, is in the main pump station, we actually have a grinder that we're currently using to try and handle all of the wipes. So, this facility will actually be located very close to the main pump station, which is the next topic on our upgrades. So, the pump station, the main pump station, is located at Mast Road, and it is very original to the plant. If you take a look at the picture, it looks like it's a little old, is desperately in need of repair. We actually have two pumps in the main pump station, and what we would do is replace them with four pumps. And there would be two pumps that would be smaller pumps and two that would be large. By doing that, we would be able to utilize the smaller pumps to pump water when the flow is lower. So, that would be at times like it in the evening. And we should be able to realize about $10,000 in electrical savings from this. Following that, we talked a little bit about the clarifiers. And we talked about that step in the process where we remove solids from the wastewater. So, if you look at this picture, the top picture is a primary clarifier, and the bottom picture are three secondary clarifiers. During the Phase 1 upgrade, we actually added a new clarifier. During the Phase 2 upgrade, we actually changed the mechanisms, which are the metal mechanisms inside the clarifier. We actually changed the mechanisms of one of the clarifiers. We still have one primary clarifier that we need to change the mechanisms on. So, that's included as part of the upgrade. With regard to the secondary clarifiers, we haven't done anything with them, and we need to change those metallic or those metal mechanisms in all of the secondary clarifiers. Now, what we do right now is we will paint the steel that's there, we'll coat it, and we'll try to the best of our ability to keep that equipment running. But for the most part, it's corroding severely. The other thing we're planning to do is we're planning to add algae removal system. So, an algae removal system is, in the launders, there is a trough on the outside of the clarifiers. Kyle's actually pointing to it. And what you have is you have a brush system that scrubs the algae off the launders. Right now, and this is a safety issue, right now, what we have is we have our operators take a big, long broom, and they'll actually physically scrub off the algae. And yesterday, we actually had one operator spend a full eight-hour day doing that, trying to get the algae out. Not scrubbing or letting the algae go through would be both a compliance issue as well as an issue for downstream equipment. It would cause clogging. It would cause issues with our devices that are used to analyze as well, our analyzers This particular upgrade is probably one that means the most to me. Right now, what we have, multiple times a year, we will have our operators enter our sludge-holding tanks to actually physically shovel out sludge that is inside the sludge-holding tank. We have a huge problem of the wipes getting into the sludge-holding tank as well. This is considered a confined-space entry. And confined-space entries, as I'm sure everybody knows here, they're rather dangerous. You have hazardous environments. Hydrogen sulfide gas is an issue here, as well as any time you go inside a tank, it's definitely a dangerous thing. The ladders, actually, you can see it in the picture, that they climb to go downstairs. So, one of the things that I would personally like to do is I would personally like to see that nobody ever has to go inside a tank to clean it out again. And how we're planning to accomplish that is by removing the top four feet of the tank and also adding additional hatches on top of the tank. So, the additional hatches will allow us to be able to access all areas of the tank using what we call a vacuum truck. So, we have a vacuum truck on site. And currently, because of the height of the tank, we can't actually reach down to the bottom. The other thing with the additional hatches and by removing the wipes from the wastewater, we should be able to, by just pressure washing the inside of the tank and the vacuum truck, we should be able to actually get all of the sludge out and clean the tanks as we need to. And if we do need to do a confined-space entry, it would probably be a very short entry, and we would probably only have to do it once a year as opposed to multiple times a year. The headworks building provides quite a bit of things that we need to upgrade there. So, if you look at the top corner of the slide, you'll see our generators. So, emergency generators are required at wastewater treatment plants because if we lose power at a wastewater treatment plant, we're required to be able to maintain the operations at the facility. Both of those are original to the facility. And on one note, I wanted to point out, we are having actually trouble right now finding spare parts to repair our emergency generators. So, we're proposing to upgrade those. What we're also proposing to do is put in a new roofing system because the roof is currently leaking, and modify and expand our laboratory. So, with the MS-4 compliance that Eileen was talking about, we are going to have some analytical requirements there. And we are a NELAC-certified lab, so we can perform that analysis in our lab. And by upgrading the lab, we'll have the space and the capabilities to do so. Along with everything that we're upgrading, we're going to bring the building into ADA compliance. We do have residents come to the plant. They come to the plant to get compost, and they'll come upstairs to get tickets. We also have individuals who collect samples from time to time and bring them in for analysis. So, there will be a lift there as well as an ADA-compliant bathroom. And right now, we don't have a women's locker room, so we'll be adding a women's locker room as well as an ADA-compliant women's bathroom. Then, there are other miscellaneous upgrades associated with that. If you look at the bottom picture, you're looking at sludge piping. So, that is original to the facility as well. And honestly, to be able to open a valve in that piping, you have to physically get on top of the piping, and you have to pull with all your might and open it. And that's an accident waiting to happen from an ergonomic perspective. We talked briefly about Sohegan and Thornton Ferry pump station. Both of those are original to the town. They were about 46 years old at this point. So, we would be doing a complete overhaul in both those pump stations as well. And we expect to save about $3,000 a year in electrical savings. Have I broken? Oh, the map. Yes, sorry. So, that outstanding map, which we, I was never really good at coloring, so somebody else did that, actually shows you. I always had, it's why I'm an engineer. It's just a tough thing. So, if you look at the blue, you'll see that is the service area for Sohegan pump station. If you look at the pink, that is the service area for Thornton's Ferry pump station. And if you look over here... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is for the main pump station over here. So, Thornton's Ferry is located right about here. Sohegan is located right about here. And we are located right here. The thing I'd like to point out here is how close we are to the Merrimack River. And that's something to take into account, that if we were to have a failure at any of these pump stations, there would be a couple of consequences. One would be we could have a potential release to the ground surface. We also could have a potential backup in the sewer system itself and not be able to provide all of these individuals with their sewer service. And we could also potentially have a release to the Merrimack River. So, the last component of the project, it talks about the compost facility. And under the Phase 2, we did spend $1.7 million to do structural upgrades to the compost facility. One of the things that we weren't able to complete was we weren't able to complete the replacement of six exhaust fans from the, at the facility. So, it's really important to replace these exhaust fans because what we're going to do is we're going to take that corrosive environment that's inside the compost facility, and we're going to take it out and put it through a biofilter. If you leave it inside the facility, you don't replace the air as much as you're supposed to. You're actually going to take that $1.7 million, and you're not going to maintain the infrastructure that we had spent our money on. You'll also see in the picture on the right-hand side that we have some exterior wall panels that we still need to replace. And in association with replacing these six exhaust fans, we also have some ductwork that we'd like to replace. Last, but not least on the list, is the amendment storage building. Now, this building was constructed in 1985 and cost $50,000 when we constructed it. And as you can tell from the picture, there are some things missing on the roof, and the actual structure itself is in a bit of disrepair and could use to be replaced. So, this is the final component. So, now, what we've all been waiting for, the price tag associated with this. Yes?
What's an amendment?
I'm sorry. It's sawdust.
Thank you.
You know, I actually had a note to say that, and I forgot, so my apologies. So, amendment to sawdust. So, when we make compost, what we do is we take the sludge and we mix it with sawdust. And after we mix it really, really well, we put it through the facility, we raise the temperature to get rid of the pathogens. And we come on the flip side, we have this really nice product.
If you haven't seen the place, you should go see it because it's impressive. Uh, Peter?
I think it's impressive.
Serena, where do we get this sawdust from? Is there...
We buy it. So, we have right now two vendors that we purchased the sawdust from. If you were to ask me, I think we spend about $100,000, a little over $100,000 a year on sawdust.
Now, these vendors, they use recycled wood? Or what is that, where does it come from? Or trees or forests?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I can ask them.
Well, you know, the reason I ask is because I see at the landfill, you know, you see people come in with all sorts of lumber and everything and wood products, and it goes, you see it get taken away, but you're not quite sure where it goes. So, I was wondering if they...
Yeah, foresters are really good at using every bit of every tree now.
Yeah, the treetops.
Yep. And the sawdust is just one byproduct that they make. And they found that there's a market for it, of course. And so, we're one of the consumers of that market.
Paul? Our sawdust is, could be made up of two things. It could be made up of sawdust itself, because we go out for bid for that. We also used to go out for chips, which are chips, and they have to be a certain size and a certain quality. And we used to have three individual haulers. Now, we have two. And one of the haulers will call us and say, "I got a big job going. Can you take an extra load?" Because I have the loads. So, but it's, we go out to bid, and it's either sawdust itself or the chips. And the chips have a special size, dimension, and everything else. They're not like, we thought about using, doing the chips from the landfill with Jiptel was here, and found out that the quality was not as good as the stuff that we would get from another vendor.
Thanks. Chips are good for composting?
They can be.
Because I remember in the old days, the chips, so I suspect it's probably different, but...
The problem with the kind of chips you'd get from, like Askpland, is they're out cutting trees around power lines. They're too big, and they don't make a good product. And where we market our product to companies that put it on their grass, they want a nice product.
Which is why I didn't, I was surprised to hear you used chips. I didn't think we did that anymore.
They have to be a certain size.
Yeah.
And we also screen at the very end, so anything that's big that's left is a tail end.
You need to have Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
We also screen the compost at the end, so anything that's really big gets taken out. And as you're processing it at a high temperature, it'll actually degrade if it's the right size. So, it won't stay as a chip.
All right. Makes sense.
Just to follow up, I think, Pete, you were suggesting maybe some of the stuff that goes through the landfill could be used. But building material scraps and whatnot that might have tar, might have other contaminations on it, might be pressure-treated wood, all things like that would cause problems.
Yeah, we couldn't use it.
Contaminating the material. Nails and screws and stuff would all be issues.
So, we comply with, it's a Class A biosolid, and there are regulatory requirements and testing that we do on the compost to make sure that it meets the Class A biosolids requirements. So, if you had tar or something, we'd fail. Yeah, we wouldn't, we'd fail. It wouldn't be good.
And speaking of compost, when we bring compost in from other, not compost, when we bring sludge in from other communities, we test that for the metals and everything before we accept it. So, that ours remains clean at the other end.
So, we require that they give us full analytical testing prior to sending it to us. And we also require for communities that do do it on a regular basis, at least once per year, will give us analytical testing. And this is for a full suite of compounds, both organics and inorganics.
And we also charge them for us accepting it.
Yes.
How often do we revise the rates on that, or is it something we follow a market somewhere?
So, we have intermunicipal agreements with the communities that we accept sludge from. And there are increases in each contract. So, the rates are actually all over the place. So, Aggrisource, we also accept some of their material, and I believe that's $55 a ton. And then, I think we're as high as, I almost brought that sheet, too. I think we're as high as $65 a ton. But you know what I'll do is I will get the sheet, and I will send it to Eileen so she can give it to you.
I was curious.
And I think where you're going at is if we were going to get rid of our sludge instead of turning it into compost, any idea what our cost would be, what we would have to pay to get rid of our sludge on the open market?
So, to get rid of compost, if we couldn't sell it, that would cost us about $75 a cubic yard. To get rid of sludge, depending on, and this would be stuffed with water in it, it would cost probably anywhere from $100 to $250 a ton. And we generate of wet sludge about 10 tons a day if we weren't accepting everybody else's material. So, and that doesn't include hauling costs, by the way. That will only include treatments. And the cost will vary on, depending on what you have to do. There aren't a lot of landfills to accept this material. So, it could end up going to incineration, and if it goes to incineration, it costs much more.
So, if we're only charging $55 to somebody, that's a pretty good deal for them?
It's outstanding deal. That's why they keep coming.
So, you guys are continually comparing the market rate versus what we're charging in order to make sure that...
We don't compare it as much, but we are so far, we are so much lower than what like a turnkey that would charge.
That's why I asked the question.
Maybe we shouldn't be quite so much lower.
I think we shouldn't be.
We shouldn't be.
We should not be quite so much lower.
Right. We should not be.
I would definitely...
We should look into that, maybe. You guys might at some point, because I think I'd be interested in it. And I don't want to terrorize people because we happen to have a nice compost facility, but there's obvious costs.
It's a good point, I think. But we'll compile the data, get it to Eileen, and we can follow up at another council meeting.
But I guess what I would say is that, you know, if they weren't sending it to our compost facility, they might not even have options for it. And it would cost a fortune. So, our ratepayers shouldn't really be, not to say that they are right now, but we should be getting the market rate or close to it. We shouldn't be, you know, supplementing.
We shouldn't be, yeah, having the market. We shouldn't be competing.
Right.
I actually think one area that we should, we should look at the rates are our septicage. We accept septicage from a lot of haulers right now. And Milford actually closed their facility, so they're not accepting septicage right now. So, our septicage, the amount that we're accepting right now has significantly increased. And that's an area where I think we should definitely look at that rate because that's a very, very...
Do we only accept septicage from our town?
No, we do accept septicage from other towns. We accept grease only from our town.
What only?
Grease only.
Okay, yep.
Do we charge residents for septicage disposal?
So, septicage comes in on trucks, and the trucks are charged, yes.
Okay, but is it the same for residential septicage?
Yes, it does. It comes from our community and outside our community. There are set communities that we accept septicage from.
And there's only one rate that you charge?
And there is only one rate.
I mean, because they, when they pump out my system, they always want to be able to say where it's coming from so that they can report that to where they're dumping it because presumably they get charged different amounts based on...
Well, they're making money. They're making lots of money on that.
I'm sure they are.
We get a slip.
Because I don't want it, but anyway.
We get actually a slip from every septicage hauler for every single truck that they bring in, and it tells us where exactly everything came from.
So, we could have a discount for residents versus non-residents, since we're already paying for the system through a tax.
Well, I think what the problem is, is that you can't determine what the septicage haulers or the septic, I guess is what it's called, mark up their prices for.
No, you can't, but you can charge different rates. I mean, I...
No, what I'm saying is, you could show... No, what I'm saying is, you could charge it to a vendor.
And they may just pass it, they may just keep it.
And the vendor will either keep it or keep raising their rates because there's...
Because they can.
Because they can. So. I doubt anybody's going to dig into their profits and not pass it on to you.
I knew you were going to ask that, and I don't remember.
Because that would tell us how much you're making.
Well, maybe, because they can empty a couple of tanks per truck.
The haulers have left Merrimack, and they have gone to other treatment areas around us because Merrimack was too high.
For septic?
For septic. And the funny part about that is that where they were going, they were bringing their stuff to us, so we were charging them anyways for...
Milford, yes.
Milford. So, yeah, we did lose some haulers, and because we were considered high to those haulers. This is about four or five years ago. And now that Milford shut its doors, some of them have kind of come crawling back to us, so. But it's something that we should look at in the budget season coming with the revenues. So we should look at that as part of the budget process.
Interesting.
Very good. Didn't mean to go off on that tangent, but I appreciate it.
That's okay.
It's, it's part of our costs and factors.
So now the exciting part, everybody's waiting for. If we were to do this project in one...
Chunk.
Chunk, it would be $22.6 million. Now, understanding that that is a large sum of money, and also understanding that we need to be fiscally conscious when we execute these projects, what we looked at is we looked at the, the possibility of doing this project in two phases. So that's what we'd like to propose today, is to perform a Phase 3 and a Phase 4 project. Now, understanding that all the aspects of these projects, all of this equipment that we're proposing, or most of this equipment that we're proposing to upgrade is beyond its useful life and close to 50 years old, what we've decided to do, or what we'd like to do, is we'd like to do the design for the project upfront in the Phase 3. And the reason for that is that if catastrophic failure occurs on any of the equipment that we do not upgrade during the Phase 3, then we could come to you with a design already completed with an emergency request to execute a project. So to execute the project in two phases, we took a look at what the risk and the reward was, or the risk associated with each project. Actually, it's the other slide?
Yes.
Yeah. So as I pointed out when I was at the map, the pump stations are located very close to the Merrimack River. And what we realized, that if, if those pump stations failed, Thornton's Ferry, Sohegan, as well as the main pump station, we had a potential for an environmental release, as well as a potential to stop providing a service to the town of Merrimack residents. So the Phase 3 that is being proposed is to build a new screenings building, to upgrade the main pump station, to upgrade the Sohegan pump station, and upgrade the Thornton's Ferry pump station. And with that comes a couple, some miscellaneous activities associated with electrical upgrades, as well as some upgrades associated with our SCADA system, so it's communications upgrade. The remaining project, which includes the headworks building, the clarifiers, the compost, the new amendments building that holds sawdust, would be done in a separate upgrade, which would be the Phase 4 upgrade, and that would be $12 million. So just to point, yes?
I'm sorry. How do we go from 22 million to 25 million?
So the cost increase is associated with mobilization and demobilization multiple times, as well as the, we put an escalation in the cost for inflation, because things keep going up in price. And that was, we were conservative on that escalation also because of the tariffs. A lot of what we'd be doing under the Phase 4 would be bringing in steel, and right now there are some pretty significant tariffs associated with bringing in steel and those types of materials, and, and we, we are expecting that that'll only go up. Yes?
So, I don't understand why, when we've already spent a fortune on the compost facility, why we're proposing another $1.7 million on the compost facility.
So of that $1.7 million, $500,000 of it is to replace the amendment storage building, and then the remaining funds are to do the upgrades to the actual compost facility. Storage building isn't separate, yep.
We just spend a fortune on a new compost facility? I mean, wasn't it several million dollars?
It was 1.7, yes.
One?
We spent 1.7 on the compost facility.
I think it was a lot more. I think it was a lot more, but...
Okay, I mean, I can, let me go back and I'll look and I'll confirm that.
Okay, because we did some pretty big bonds.
So the total upgrade for the Phase 2 included both the plant and the compost facility. So that bond was for $7.1 million.
That's the one she's talking about?
That's what, yeah, that's the one you're talking about.
Okay. So of the 7.1...
1.7.
1.7 was that?
Was the compost facility.
Okay. So what's wrong with it now?
So now we have some, let me, why don't we go back to the slide so you can take a look? I'm sorry. I'm going the wrong way.
Wrong way, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So what we have is we have six exhaust fans that we need to replace in the compost facility. We have some deteriorated exterior walls and some ductwork. And, and the primary reason to do this is to do exactly what you're thinking, is to protect our infrastructure, because we already spent a lot of money. It would make no sense not to finish it and not to protect it.
Serena, in a nutshell, because I don't want you to, I don't want you to have to belabor it, but I thought that $1.7 million that you just spoke of was to in fact do the siding and the roof because of the corrosion that had taken place, because apparently the exhaust fans don't work well enough.
So what happened when, and I'm doing this now third-hand, because I wasn't actually here when it happened.
Sure.
But what I was told at the time, and I did write the air permit when we did this. So what I was told at the time is that the structural damage to the building itself was a lot greater than we had thought, and there was damage to the roof that was a lot more than we had thought. So we ended up spending a lot more money, fixing those particular items than the other things. And I think the total cost, when they did the preliminary design, came back at like $2.8 million, would have been needed to do everything.
I don't, I don't remember. I believe that, because you showed me up here.
I don't know that that came, I don't know that that came back to you, but I think that's what had happened.
I don't think it did.
I don't think it did either.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I can give you, I can give you most of the backup. I can find it.
Very good. I'm, I'm interested in the time, and I, I know you were on a roll and then stopped for a minute, but what's the timeframe between Phase 3 and Phase 4?
We'll get to it.
So we, yeah, we will definitely get to that.
I knew you would, I just, it's been, I haven't seen it, so I was curious.
So one more. Yeah, we can go here. Okay, actually, why don't we answer that question first? So if you look at that, we, we're looking at to start, pay the first bond payment for Phase 3 in '23, '24, which means substantial completion would be in '22, '23, and to make the first bond payment for Phase 4 in '25, '26, which means that substantial completion would be in '24, '25. Yes?
But is this, this is participating in the revolving loan, state revolving loan fund, which is actually lower interest rate?
Yes.
And instead of starting to pay it back six months after you get the money, you only have to start paying it back after, as you said, substantial completion. So that's why you see, even though we may be starting the project next fiscal year, we won't even have our first bond payment until '23, '22, '23?
'23, '24.
'23, '24. So I mean, that's, that's a big advantage.
Yes.
You know, where we get the money upfront and we don't have to start paying it for quite some time. Maybe a couple of years even.
Do they get that?
Right. I'll, I'll wait till you're done.
Oh, no, that's okay. So if you take a look at, well, why don't I go back? So I apologize a little, oh, going the wrong way again. If you take a look, so for those of you who are new to the council, we actually have a fund balance in wastewater. And Eileen had mentioned that there was a sewer rate study completed, and as part of that sewer rate, it was determined that we need to maintain $2 million in this fund balance to help pay for emergency projects and/or for upgrades and for anything else that might come along. So if you look at doing this project in one, in one swoop, we would actually have our first bond payment in '22, '23, '24, and you look at the fund balance, it actually drops below $2 million as time goes on. Now, what this assumes, this particular graph assumes, is that we will have four 9% rate increases in our sewer fund in alternating years. So by 2026, we would have, our sewer rate would, will go up from $242 to $314. If you do... Huh? Every alternating years.
Per year.
So if I am a user, it would be $240 per year?
Yes, right now, it's $242 per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
And do you have something that shows where we are in...
Absolutely. So if I were to execute this project in two phases, you'll see that the fund balance will, is doing much better, that we never drop below the $2 million target balance. Thank you. So the important thing to note here is that the, the money for paying back the debt associated with this project is not coming from the tax base, but it is indeed coming from the sewer user fees. So, Eileen's question, we are the fifth lowest in the state at $242 per year. If we were to increase, have a 9% increase every other year, we would be 300, and I was wrong before, $341, we would be 13th lowest in the state. And that's assuming that nobody else would increase their, their sewer rates, which is not something that typically happens. So what does a sewer rate pay for? The sewer rate pays for our operation and maintenance costs associated with operating the facility, as well as it's supposed to pay for replacement of aging infrastructure over here. So if we were to compare ourselves to communities of similar sizes, let's take, for example, a look at Derry, that charges $337 a year to our $242 a year, we see that communities of similar sizes, we are still, we are the lowest amongst them. And one thing I want to point out about Derry is, we are what we call a grade 4 facility, so we have a lot of infrastructure associated with treating our wastewater. Derry is a lagoon facility, so Derry has four lagoons. I beg your pardon?
It's just funny words.
Oh, it sounds funny, yeah. So they're two, they're like four ponds, big ponds that they have. The wastewater comes in, it goes into the different ponds, it settles the solids, then it goes to a big, big, huge pond that has aerators and they discharge it. So it's a much simpler operation. They have a lot less personnel that are needed to maintain that facility, and they still charge $337. So the point being is that perhaps we need to look at a rate structure that might, is a little bit more conducive to be able to execute some of these upgrades as we go forward.
Serena, as I look at this, and...
Yes.
And you're looking at a steady rate of a service population of 22,000?
Yeah, I estimated that, yeah.
Okay. But reality is, the service rate, I would imagine, is going to increase over the next few years.
Yes.
Especially with all the, the product, the projects coming into town. To me, I'd like to see anything new that came into town went onto city sewer, town sewer. So that, that number could increase and affect the balance as well?
Yeah, it certainly will. There, there's been a state law for a number of years that any building or facility that's located within 200 feet of a public sewer is required to connect, and that's, that's true in our town as well. So anyone that's on the system currently is, or that builds on a, on an area that's within 200 feet of a pipe, does have to connect. There's a number of new projects coming, some that, that are all in various phases. Certainly the Flatley project is, is coming along fairly quickly. The Overlook Drive, one on East Chamberlain Drive, is, has just started. Some other projects further down the line are the Executive Park Drive project, the Edgbury Heights, which is down south of Nashua Corp on Dana Webster, and the, and the MPO project. Those will all certainly add to, to our revenue rates. And the sewer, so the graphs we showed you don't include the projects that are approved but not built yet, because we, we kind of take a conservative approach on the graph. We, we want to make sure we don't get under that $2 million. So we, we kind of take a conservative approach. Once the projects are built and we realize the revenues, then we build them into the, to the graph. Chiefly because we have no control over when, when the projects actually get built. We've seen that, certainly with the Chestnut Hill project, which will also be on sewer. That got its approval, I think, three or four years ago, and they still haven't built. So we don't, we don't count on those revenues until we have the revenues.
I got you. I mean, to me, it, it seems that, to a prospective homebuyer, that having city sewer is, is a huge plus, so.
For sure.
Thank you.
Just one question. I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but in terms of an apartment, do they, does each apartment pay 300 and whatever dollars?
It, it depends on how it's set up. Townhouse communities typically get billed the residential rate for each unit.
I'm talking about a Flatley.
Apartments like Flatley, they have, they're, they're billed as a, a commercial user, so they get what's called an allocation from us. Their, their engineers tell us upfront how much they expect to, to send to us each year, and it's based on numbers that are widely used, and they're remarkably accurate.
So, can I just ask you? So like with a, with a Flatley project, how much might that bring in in revenue for a year? I don't think it's significant.
It is. The Flatley project is going to, I have it here somewhere.
There's not.
I'm sorry, I don't have that one here.
It's like $30,000.
It's, yeah, and there, and there's, there's two fees that come along. There's the initial influx, which is the connection fee, that's a one-time fee. And what that does is it buys either the homeowner or the, the business into paying their share of the plant that's already there. As Serena noted upfront, the value of our plant is about $60 million. So that's their portion of buying into the system. And then they have the annual fee. Now, for apartments or commercial facilities, it's based on usage. The, the residential rate, the 242, that's a flat rate, and, and that's what they pay each year. For commercial facilities, we actually get the, the water usage readings from Merrimack Village District or from Penachak, and we send out bills based on water usage for those consumers.
Because there's a correlation.
Correct.
Just one more thing. Just from the perspective of the enormous cost and the enormous amount of additional debt payments, I don't, I, I don't want, you know, I mean, if, you can't really compare in relation to, you know, we're having this enormous extra cost, and we call that enormous, but then we talk about an apartment building that might bring in $50,000 a year. So I just want to make sure, and, and I could be wrong, but I think it's an important thing to say that it's, this is huge and this is something.
Some of the examples I can give, the Overlook Estates project, which just got started underway up on East Chamberlain Drive, the connection fees for that project are going to be $90,000. And then the annual revenue for us going forward at current rates are just about $11,000. So that, that's the kind of money we're talking about. It's, it's significant, and these projects are, and certainly going to help fund these projects that we're proposing.
So if I heard you correctly, the, for a residential area, a single-family home, it's based on a flat fee?
Correct.
Not based on water usage?
That's correct.
So if you have a family of 10 in a house, it's, they get charged the same as a family of two?
That's correct.
Even though there is obviously a vast difference in how much water is being used and flushed. So the rate goes up in order to help pay for the bond. So the rate goes up in order to help pay for the bond that will be needed for this. When these units come onboard that we've just been talking about, the Flatley and the, does the rate ever go down? The more users you have sending in water and et cetera, does, does the rate go down for the, for the user? So if we, if we go up to, say, $375 per year, now all of the, we've got two developments that come online. Does that rate get readjusted because now we have more users? And it goes lower?
Theoretically, it could. Where, we did, as Sarita mentioned, we did the last sewer rate study almost 10 years ago. When you get the budgets in coming up soon, you're going to see a proposal for us to do the next sewer rate study. And so, so that's something we routinely do, and, and we try and adjust the rates to accommodate what's reality. We haven't had the problem of, of getting too much money in that we had to lower rates. So theoretically, if, if we collected, if the rates, if the revenues got so high that our sewer fund balance climbed up to 4 million, for example, then yes, we would propose a sewer rate reduction.
Yeah, because we haven't had this kind of building going on in town before.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, 1985, we definitely didn't.
Yeah, but that's been quite a while now.
But Paul?
Let me just say this one thing, okay? So you get, you get $90,000 once, all right? From a big apartment thing like this. And then you bring in $20,000 a year, and yet you have a $1.5 million bond payment. So I just want to make sure that you understand that we're not talking apples to apples at all here. So when you think about significant revenues, I want to point out that there's really significant expenditures, additional expenditures. So, you know, for fairness of comparison, yes, it does, you know, it, yes, it does cost, cut back the additional cost, but not in proportion to what we're.
Granted, granted, but in the back of my mind, the calculator is ticking for the average individual living in town.
I've heard that on the phone.
That's what's going on.
So the rate study been in effect since about 2009. Every other year, we're planned an increase in the rates. That's what the rate study provided. What has happened in the past is that I can remember sitting down with the previous operations manager for, for wastewater and proposing a 7, 7, 7, 7 over a four, over an eight-year period. And what happens is we did get new developments. And what might have happened was we did a 7, then a 5, because we take that into account. And, and right now, what Sarita's proposing is four nines. However, that isn't locked in stone. Those, the first nine is for next year. Because we're proposing the 9% next year in the budgets, which you'll get next month. But in the year, when we go do the 21, 21, 22 budget, we'll look at the rate study again, and we'll look at the rate and see if it's a 9% or if it's another number. So the rates have never gone down. They never have gone down. The increase in future years percentage has gone down. Hope that explained it.
Peter? You know, it's interesting, all the talk about the rates and everything else and new projects coming in. And I know I've, I think I've talked to you guys before about this, but how much of our capacity are we currently using?
So the plant is designed for 5 million gallons per day, and on average, we use about 1.8 million gallons per day. During high, high flow seasons, we'll use about 2.3 million gallons per day. So we're less than half right now.
Okay, and I think that's important for the folks at home, the taxpayers and everybody to see. You know, that, you know, the impact, I mean, we, we're still well below our capacity.
And Anheuser-Busch is half of that, is that correct? Or more?
Or more, yeah.
They are, they are about 40% of our flow, but there's something called wastewater load, and they're up to 60% of our wastewater load, and they're up to 80% of our nutrient load.
Which is why we changed, part of the reason for fee structure discussion back 10 years ago. I've got, I don't want to interrupt your, your stuff. But my big question is, how can I make this project happen all at once, Phase 3 and 4, to save $2.5 million and protect or at least understand that $2 million barrier that you're looking to hold? What can I do to make that happen? Some, I don't know.
Well, the, the first thing that would, would happen is, and kind of that's one of the things we're hoping to get out of tonight, is some direction on, on how you guys want to proceed. Going back to that chart, the, the additional revenues that we've been talking about will, will factor into this chart. So again, this is a very conservative, the blue lines are very conservative. They will be better. As we continue forward, the, the simple answer is we'll have to look at probably bigger initial increases than the 9%. There's been a hesitation to, to go to double-digit increases. Nobody has wanted to do that, understandably. It, it's not an easy decision. Certainly, we're interested in saving the $2.5 million. Long-term, it's a better investment to do so. But, but short-term, there, there would be some, some pain for folks who are on this system. But I, but I do think it's really important to come back to this slide and point out that this is all the communities in New Hampshire that pay sewer bills, and we're the fifth lowest. And the reason we're the fifth lowest is because we've been deferring these maintenance projects for so long, and we just haven't done them. And, you know, at some point, they have to get done. And to do that, our, our rate needs to, to increase. Now, what we're proposing with the four 9% increases, so over eight years, we're looking at a $99 increase in your sewer bill over eight years. I don't want to say it's nothing, because it's certainly not, but, you know, it's certainly not as big of increases as we see in many other aspects of our lives.
Very true. But, but we have to be cognizant of it.
Correct, yeah.
Paul?
Finley, to, to get it all done and put the $22.6 million on the warrant this year, you're looking at about an 11% increase this coming year, and at least 11% increase in the next year. And then the out-years might be between 9 and 11.
Sure. Now, is there, the $2 million is for the catastrophic, or not catastrophic, for a major problem that we have to address immediately?
Somebody walks away, a business walks out, we lose revenue. It's for operating expenses. If, if one of our taxpayers decides to get up and leave the town of Merrimack, it's, if we're lucky, we get six months out of it. That's what the plan was, the $2 million was six months in 2009. We're operating a little more than that right now. And our budgets are between $4 and $5 million, so we're not at six months anymore. But that's really what that $2 million was for, to give us a cushion if we did lose a big provider or, or business. Because commercial, residential is about three, around $700,000 to three-quarters of a million dollars in revenue a year. Our commercial is more than that. So if one business walks away, you know, we could lose some serious money quickly. And that's what that $2 million was for.
All right. I'm having a hard time, but 11% is scary as well for.
The only concern, I, I do understand, I fundamentally agree with your concept. I'm just wondering, it needs a two-thirds vote to pass. And being able to pass an 11 million bond versus a, well, whatever. The first one's 12, right?
13.
Oh, okay. A 13, whatever it is. An extra million. So, so have me wrong for a million. Anyway, whatever it is, versus the 22. And a lot of it has to do with knowledge of the public with this, because I think if, if everyone understood the fundamentals of it, but I don't think that's always true, no matter what you do. I'm just, my concern is, what happened if it didn't pass? What, what?
Well, that, that kind of, you gave us a nice segue into what our next steps are.
Well, I'm glad it worked out well. I do that.
We, we put the highway garage on two years ago for the second time. And one of the things we did in Public Works is we took our show on the road. We went to a number of community groups. We reached out to everyone that we could think of. We're planning to do the same thing, if you'll let us. And, and I 100% agree with you, Council Harrington. The more people we can educate on this, the more people are going to understand how important it is and, and the why we need to do it.
And the impact. And where you are in relationship to other towns. And giving that whole perspective of it'll be $90 per year. And again, you don't want to say, well, that's nothing. That's not true.
Correct.
But at the same time, it's in perspective to all the other information you're able to provide.
And sewer rates, sewer rates, sewer rates.
As compared to property, right. Yeah, I think that's, that would be my major concern, is the acceptance of it.
Because that's, that's our major concern as well, and we have that as the third bullet here. We're very cognizant of the fact that this needs to get a two-thirds passage. Otherwise, we, we don't get to do any upgrades, which is, is not good either. And I guess, if you look long-term, so the question has been asked of both of, both of us, and I'm guessing Paul and Eileen as well. What happens if we don't do things?
Exactly.
Well, what, what would happen if, if we had catastrophic failures and we had to do emergency purchases? We'd have to come to the council and have the council impose a mandatory either assessment or, or big-time sewer increase at, at that point. And we'd have to do it that way and raise, raise the cash as fast as we could through, through the fees.
And at more cost.
Right, and we're talking about catastrophic failures now, too. So, you know, EPA comes in and there's, everybody, a whole section of town can't use their toilets and, you know, various things like that. So that's why we were talking about doing two phases, because it's that important to get the, at least the pump stations, right?
So is that why you broke it into two that was more sellable?
That was our, that was our calculation, yeah.
Well, financially, it made more sense. Financially, it made more sense.
Yes and no. Yes and no, yes in terms of being able to sell it, but you're paying the $2 million extra. Oh, I understand, I understand. But there's a, yeah.
Yeah, I'm with Finley that why pay $2 million, over $2 million more for the same amount of work if we don't have to? And I think the public needs to understand that. My second question and comment regarding that is, if the equipment is so close to failure, can we even afford to wait for, you know, another, put this in two phases and wait for the second phase to happen?
So that's why we're proposing, if we were to do it in two, in two phases, doing the complete design at the front end of Phase 3, because it is possible the failure of other equipment can, and can occur. And if that were to occur, we'd be sitting before you for an emergency request to actually execute a project immediately. So understand, as we go through this, we do have a phenomenal team at the wastewater treatment plant, and we do everything in our power to keep all of this working. So it's not something that, if something happened, it wouldn't be like we'd be putting our hands in the air and saying, oh, well, we need money. We would be doing everything in our power to keep it working, and we have contingencies when pump stations fail that we would follow to make sure that we could keep the, the system going, working.
Peter?
Tom, sorry about that.
Thanks. I appreciate that you went on. I need to go back. These charts that you've shown us for doing it together as one or doing it as two separate ones, almost indicate that there's less cost for doing it as two. And I need to better understand, how come our funds drop off so much with the same rate increases if we're saving $2 million by doing it as one unit as opposed to two? And the only difference is two years and starting to make the payment back? This is not clear at all to me, how this can be true.
A couple of things. First of all, what we're talking about is raising the rates faster, okay? And then.
Where's that?
What they said is that instead of going up 9% in the first, in the first go-around, we'd have to raise it by 11%. And then.
This chart only shows 9%.
Which is what they were talking about originally. So let me just.
And that's what I'm asking about, I'm sorry.
So let me just, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, so these projects are consecutive, so that's why. So it would be 13 million one year, and then the, the other one would happen the next year. And that's why it, you know, why the costs don't seem to, they, they seem to, the fund balance dips down for a few years and then is stable again. And that's why they would need to do an increase of 11% rather than 9% if they were to do the, them together, because it would be dropping below the $2 million by doing it at the same time. So in other words, you'll get, you'll get your, your bond payments, instead of being broken into, you have these payments starting, for 13 million, starting in this year, and then the 12 million, or whatever it is, starting the following year. In this case, they would start all on the same year.
And what it is, is the bond payment would be greater, which would bring it under the $2 million. The $2 million savings is there, but it's, that, that's the project savings. It's not going to be a savings to keep us above the $2 million, I guess.
Yeah, and this slide here, Tom, kind of shows it. So by breaking it up into two projects, the.
I can't read it. Which slide are you talking about?
Number, page 25, slide 25, rather, on page 13.
And I can explain it verbally as well. So if we break it up into two projects, the yearly payments for the $13 million bond are $800,000 a year. So that's, that's what comes out of those first two years when we're only paying for just the fa, half of the Phase 3 project. By doing, then in year three, after we've finished, year three of paying, after we've finished Phase 4, we're adding additional $733,000 in payments. By doing it all at once, you've got that full 1.5 million or 1.3 or 4 million, whatever it is, because it's starting with a 22 instead of 25. But you've got that initial $700,000 hit in year one and two of pa, of payments, which you're seeing on those graphs. And that's why it dips so low. If we, I, I meant to bring a, a bigger picture of the graph, and I, I just didn't get a chance to, but we can put that together. If you look at the long-term graph side by side over the, either 20 years for doing the single Phase 3 project, or the 22 years of doing the Phase 3, Phase 4 project, by doing it at once, long-term, we're slightly better off. Because we're not incurring that extra $2.5 million in, in project cost. And we're paying it off two years earlier.
Why aren't we doing longer-term bonds? I've never heard of doing a 20-year bond on a, something that has a useful life of 30 or 40 years.
So actually, the equipment all has a useful life of 20 years now. And so they do 20-year bonds for these. So in order to do a 30-year bond, your equipment has to have a life of 30 years.
So they tell you the duration.
Yeah, do you want to talk about the SRF program?
Oh, yeah, sure, we could, so the SRF program, yes.
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to do this now?
Well, let, let Sarita finish.
Well, let me talk with Paul, because Paul had one other thing also.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So, so. Did that?
No.
Okay. So basically, what's happening is that you're garnering a savings of about $1 million. Sorry. You're garnering a savings of $1 million. You're, you're offsetting $500,000 of a would-be bond payment. If you do a $22.6 million project, it's roughly between 1.3 and 1.4 million, depending on the interest rate. So what you're doing is you're garnering that $500,000 in the first year, because you're not paying the 1.3, you're only paying the $800,000. You're garnering the $500,000 in the second year, because, so the same thing. In the third year, when the other bond kicks in, that's, as you'll start seeing. In the third year, when the other bond kicks in, that's, as you'll start seeing the chart coming down. So, basically, why they're so different, if we kept that chart going, you'll see us drop below the $2 million potentially in year six going out.
Even for the two phases.
Even for the two phases versus the big drop after four years. So, you're right. It's going to cost us more in the long run on that $2.5 million in the out years that in year six or year seven. But we're garnering that $5 million savings in the first two years, and that's why we stay afloat above the $2 million is because we're garnering extra money. So, it's a million-dollar difference. Right. At the beginning, but as it goes out, that $1 million gets gobbled up quicker. Because it's costing the $2 million more. $2 million more. But that's like year six, year seven, year eight, you'll start to see being as closer or below the $2 million level. If we did the chart for longer than, what is it, a six-year chart?
Yes.
Yeah. If we did an eight-to-10-year chart, you'd start seeing the progression going down.
Paul, I can put together an eight-to-10-year chart also, if you'd like. I can put together an eight-to-10-year chart if you'd like to see it for both options.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I certainly would. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, if we, a successful completion of Phase Three and Four gets the whole system current, is that what I'm hearing? It gets it up to date? We have no outdated equipment? We're not looking at, you know, another year or two later, wow, we've got to fix this, this thing's overdue, too?
Yes and no.
Okay.
That will get us, all of the original equipment will have been replaced.
Okay.
Looking back to our original Phase One upgrade was in 2007. All of that equipment is already 11 years old. In another 19 years, that stuff is going to need to be replaced.
19 years, though. Okay.
Well, 20, yeah, right. I misspoke there. Yeah. So, nine to, nine-plus years.
So, it's a constant battle to keep up with the maintenance of the facility.
I guess what I'm, and maybe this is not a feasible question, but I'm going to ask it anyways, but if the voters were to approve this, it went to a warrant and approved it with the increases, the four increases over the eight years, is there any guarantee we could give the taxpayers or the rate payers that the fees wouldn't be increased over X amount of time after that? You know, maybe on that aspect, you know, we can safely say we won't increase the rates for five years after that. We won't need to or...
So, that's a really tough thing to say because compliance is a moving target. Permit limits are always becoming more stringent. They're not becoming less stringent. There are issues with chemicals as well. There are, chemical costs go up, operating costs go up, electrical costs go up. There are so many factors that are included in our fee structure, and the cost of operating the plant unfortunately has never gone down. That's one of the key things. In terms of the size of this type of a project, do I think that we'll have this kind of a project in the near future? I don't know. But what I can say is, once you've replaced the original infrastructure, you're working with a facility that's in much better shape. Once you install a screenings building, you're not having the same problems that you've had before. So, potentially, we actually could be saving some of our infrastructure also, and it could be helping us with what we're doing as well. We also have a chlorine building, and that was upgraded in 1999. And the tanks in that plant are almost 20 years old at this point, and that we're going to be looking to do some minor upgrades as well there. Now, that upgrade is not going to cost $22 million. That's going to cost significantly less. But as we go forward, it's just like a house. I mean, when the roof is old, you replace it, and every 20 years it comes due, you have to replace it. If your heating system is old, you end up replacing it, and if every 15 years it comes due, you end up replacing that. So, it kind of falls into that category. I hope I've answered your question.
You did. Thank you.
Next, Peter. Eileen? No, no, no.
But from a financial perspective, and I guess I'm asking this of Paul, if, and Sarita and Kyle, so clearly, we can't spend $2, we can't spend $22 million in one year. You can't get it all done in one year. So, when you do, so you approve it, let's say the taxpayer, taxpayers' residents approve it, the whole project, is it substantial completion of this whole now 22-year project? Is the year that you start paying or, and so that, does that change?
So, if we do the project in one whole project, then substantial completion will still be 22, 23, 22, 23, and we'll be banking our first bond payment of the entire project in 23, 24. And is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I don't understand it, though, because what I'm saying to you is it's very unlikely to me that you'll be able to get all the plans and designs and get $22 million worth of work in one year done. It's going to, it can't happen in one year. I can't imagine the whole thing could happen in one year because just plans and designs take at least six months. And then the work, which is significant, will take a long time.
So, if we do it as a Phase Three project alone, and the voters approved it, we would begin design in August of 2019. We would finish design, it is a big design, so we would plan on finishing design and bidding the project by August of 2020. And then we would be, what we think is a project would take at least two years to complete, and that would bring us to about September, August, September of 2022. You're right, it's a huge project, and it could very well take longer, but that's what we did for just estimating purposes.
Okay. But what I'm talking about is the whole project. So, I'm, you were talking about the $13 million project, I thought.
Nope.
You were talking about the whole project.
I think the big difference, Eileen, is what we see in projects of these magnitudes. If we do it as a $22 million project, we're going to get, we're going to get a high caliber group of contractors bidding the project. When you go down into the 10, 11, 12, you're getting a lower, not skilled contractor, but a less able contractor in terms of putting manpower to a project. Because they're just in a different scale of company. There's certain companies that only bid projects over 20 million, and they're geared up. They have the equipment, the personnel, and to be able to accomplish it in the timeframe. So, timeframe-wise, whether it's half the project or the full project, we expect it to take two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks.
Sure.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right.
I don't think we, did we, do you want to talk a little bit about the SRF loan? And New Hampshire D S is actually offering 5% principal forgiveness on the project. We're also going to be retiring two bond payments, one in 2021 and one in 2022, for the sewer manhole rehabilitation and the dewatering upgrade. And that will be a total of $325,000, which will help with that initial bond payment. 2%. Oh, sorry. The interest rate on the loan is 2%.
Is that factored into the rate numbers that you were showing?
Yes.
Yes.
Those retiring bonds and things?
Yes, those are.
So, even with that, we still need the 9% over eight years.
Yes.
Yes, we do, unfortunately.
Every other year over, yeah.
Yes, we, at my office, I looked at this six, a long time. And I looked at 9%, so I looked at 7%, so I looked at combinations of 11, 7, all different percentages. 9% came across as the easiest way, or palatable way, to push it, not push it, but to smooth it across the number of years. We've used SRF in the past for wastewater. It's a great outlet. The interest rates are usually 1% to 2% rates, lower than what we can get on the open market in the bond bank. State revolving fund loan. We do have to pay an administration fee, 1% fee of, during the construction period. No, it's 2%, but we pay a 1% fee of the total amount that we use during the construction period. So, there is an administrative fee that goes along with it. It's still a lot cheaper than going out with the bond bank and things of that sort because of the one years from substantial completion. In other projects, I know the state has asked me, especially when we do in the compost and the Phase Two, the state asked me about substantial completion on this portion of the project versus that portion of the project. So, to answer your question, Eileen, is that they can come in and say, "Okay, you substantially completed Thornton's Ferry Pump Station, Siligun Pump Station at X amount. Do you want that substantial completion and start paying on that?" And then as the other portions... No, we don't. But as the other portions come through, they might do substantial completion that way. It is great bang for your buck. It's basically, you're borrowing the money and you're paying this revolving fund back for other projects. It's for sewer projects, it's for water projects, it's for environmental projects.
Eileen?
So, the 5% loan forgiveness is included in all of those charts as well?
No, it is not. No, it is not.
Oh, you ought to think about that.
I can put that...
With Paul.
Okay.
To see if we can smooth over.
That's what it costs us for the original facility, 5%.
The other thing that's not actually included is the...
5% of $5 million.
The federal government paid 95% of that project.
I guess what I'm saying is, if there's a 5% forgiveness, then it might, if that occurs at the beginning, then it might even out that bump.
And that's exactly the reason we didn't include it, Eileen. When we went through the recession not too long ago, the state was very slow in giving us those reimbursements. And so, they'll, we will get the 5% eventually. It doesn't always come when they promise it.
And it might be over the life of the bond.
So, that's why we didn't include it, again, because we want to be conservative in our fund.
So, this is the worst hit.
Correct.
All right. So, I realize that Eileen pointed it out, and all of us probably understand it, but what we're talking about is increases in the sewer user fees, not an increase in the tax rate.
That's correct.
So, while we have our residents vote on accepting this bond, they're not voting to increase their taxes, their property taxes. They're voting to have the sewer system maintain itself and get paid for by the user fees, as it always has been and will be in the very, forever foreseeable future.
That's correct.
This is not in any way a property tax question. This is a sewer use.
And that's a really important point. When I talked about the $90 difference, that's not $90 times your...
Your $300,000 house.
Your per-thousand rate that you see on the tax rate. It's $90 fixed.
For user fees.
Right. So, year one is 9%, so that's roughly...
And that's exactly the kind of stuff that...
That's roughly $20.
That's what we have to make very clear.
Over and over.
And over and over and over again, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Peter?
So, I guess we need a motion allowing the wastewater treatment department to move forward with their proposed project as a warrant article, is it?
Paul, I don't believe you need a motion to do that because we're bringing this forward because if we brought this forward during this CIP discussion, we'd be here for 10 hours going over all the capital. Your consensus would work so that we know how to bring it forward in the CIP and in the budget. And if you, tonight, say you want the two, we will start preparing for a warrant article when we bring the budget forward.
And see, that's it. I can work either way. I really would prefer to have it all done at once, just for that $2.5 million. But it's, you know, if it's going to create a real nightmare, as well as a potential of not passing because it's 22.5 million versus 13 million, you know, it works either way for me. I would really prefer to have the big savings, but if that can't happen, I can work either way. Eileen?
Is it possible to do two warrant articles, one for Phase Three and one for Phase Four, in the same one, on the same warrant?
What would be the benefit?
The benefit would be if they pass one?
What if they pass four and not three?
Well, it's about the same amount.
Well, I know.
So...
But the first one's more important.
No, but...
It is. I can see that.
What I'm saying is that if they pass, if they pass four, it's just a, it's just a section, basically, it's just a portion of the project. So, I don't think that we would need to differ, I don't know. But I wouldn't think that we would need to differentiate between what's being done in Phase Three is what's being done in Phase Four.
I'm not sure. I think it might lend to confusion. And I think, I'm suspecting we would have to enunciate on what the warrant article is actually covering. Again, for me, if we can't make the numbers work to do it all at once, I'm in favor of breaking it in half, in essence, in half. But, so that's, I guess, where I am.
Question for you guys. If, and I lost that thought, people are going to want to know what it means to me. So, if they approve the lump sum, you know, forward to do both all at once versus breaking it up into two phases, does it change what it means to the person? I think you were saying it's $99 a year extra for the sewer usage fee.
At the end of eight years. At the end of eight years.
That's at the end of eight years.
Yeah, at the end of eight. But see what I mean? I mean, is it, from the user's standpoint, who's paying the tax or the fee? What does it mean to them, one way or the other?
The difference for the users is the risk of that extra two years of not doing the Phase Four work, failing, and us having to do an emergency project, which would certainly cost way more. And it could have pretty severe environmental impacts, as Sarita spoke to. When a wastewater plant has a major failure...
There's fines and everything else.
Yeah, it makes the news.
I can imagine.
We remember Hook said not too long ago, had all the discs going down to Plum Island.
With no consequence, I might add.
But I think people...
I don't think there was a consequence to that. There should have been, but I don't think there was.
But people are going to want to know what does that mean to me on an annual basis.
It's all about risk.
Can I just say this? I think what you're asking is how much more is it going to cost an individual if we do both versus are we, we do one? The answer is, we would have raised it by 9%, now we're going to raise it by 11% and what the difference is in that particular year, and the next one, and the next one, potentially, because it's going to go like this a little bit. So, I think that's what you're asking about. And just, I just want to make sure that I say to you that when I spoke to Sarita and we talked about this whole thing, I asked her what had to be done to avoid catastrophic failure, and she told me it was $13 million. So, I don't want to start saying that if we don't do the $22 million, that we risk catastrophic failure, because that's not what I was told. And if it has changed, it's a significant change to what I heard.
But see, I'm not hearing that, just to let you know.
I just heard it from Kyle.
But even what he's saying is I, I'm appreciating the difference. That, to me, the only difference between the two, the priority was on the pumps.
Yes.
And that, maybe I just understood that.
No, so...
No, so, so Eileen is right.
And the other things are important, but they're not, it could be catastrophic on other things, but the big priority is other pumps.
Yes.
To me, the discussion is the money, the difference in the money, and trying to have a perspective of, will there make a difference in terms of passing the warrant? Will there be a difference with the two different of the costs? And what could be done to overcome that, which I think you've already addressed to a certain extent, that we're going to have to sell it, that we're going to have to differentiate that it's not a property tax implication, it's a user fee. And what is the user fee difference, by the way? And being clear with that, and yes, here are two choices that was available, we wanted to go this way, but here's the pros and cons to that. Yeah, it's a risk, but I think it's a risk either way.
And if, it would be, if you were selling it from the standpoint of, what is it going to cost me? The residential user, I believe it's just over 25 bucks for the first two years, a year for the first two years, and then it would be an additional...
See, that's the stuff that you have to be able to, I mean, 22 million...
Right, but 25 dollars a year is a different story.
And for what it's for, and that's not property versus user fee. I'm, I may be wrong, I say go for the whole thing, but that's my perspective. I could go either way, though.
That's what I'd rather do. I just want to make sure we can make it work.
Peter?
Nancy, you're saying go for the whole thing?
Okay.
Make it a one sweep.
So if we get the numbers...
But I would not have hot burned and broken these two.
I meant to say twice.
I'm similar to you. I just feel like we could get the job done. It would have to be, it would have to be, you know, road show and all of those things involved, and taking every opportunity to be able to explain it and people understand.
So...
If truly people, if the citizens truly understood what we're talking about now, I'd have no concern. It's just making sure they understand.
And I get that.
And 2/3 of them, that's right.
And I get that. And if we were to go forward with that, then would that speed up the rate increase? I mean, if it got approved, we'd have to say, okay, now we're not stretching it out over eight years, we're jumping up quicker.
We're going to work on those numbers. He's going to put it together, but he initially suggested...
Sorry about that. He initially suggested, I think, 11 cents.
11%. 11%.
Not 11 cents, 11%.
No, 11%, I'm sorry.
The difference between 9% and 11%, yeah.
Yes.
But it wouldn't be 11, 11, 11.
Going to a tax rate thing, I'm sorry.
No.
Right?
But it could be 11, 11, 9, 9. I have to run the numbers.
He's going to do it, yeah, so...
I don't know, I ran the numbers a long time ago.
But I think that what Peter's saying and what Barbara's saying is that the amount of money that it would cost an individual is in the $20 range.
Exactly.
Per year.
That's right.
So...
For two years.
And the other thing that I think is really important, though, for you to consider, is that if we, if this big one does not pass, we're on a 50-50% collision course of disaster.
Good point.
And, you know, going back to your point of two warrant articles. So why not present one warrant article for the whole, do Phase 3 and 4 together, and then a fallback of Phase, just do Phase 3?
I don't believe the RA will allow that.
I agree.
Because people could vote for all of them.
Yeah, if they vote for both, number one. Number two is, what are they voting for? And you have confusion there. And number three with DRA, if they vote no for the 22, but they vote yes for the 13, are they saying yes or no?
Okay.
On the project?
Yeah.
So you couldn't do a default like you do for the budget, right?
No.
If you don't approve this budget, we fall back on this one.
No, bonds are very, very specific in its language and very specific on how you got to write a bound warrant article. The other thing I'd like, to just bring to the council, the attention of the council, is remember all the additional warrant articles we're also going to have.
Yeah.
So people, on $22 million, and they start going through and looking at the budget, and then looking at the CRF.
That's also true.
And then looking at everything else. Now your warrant's getting, you know?
All the CRF, the little things, they will...
Sorry, five union contracts potentially, then...
Yeah, so I know if you must.
The warrant article about the...
About the fire department, CRF, and then...
That's right.
The school, the school teachers' contract, et cetera.
Okay. So I guess this is, I'm going to weigh in here then, because you're looking for consensus, so you want to hear from all of us. And my consent, one, I firmly believe that, yes, we need to fit, make sure this infrastructure is taken care of. I think it's a valuable piece of our community. I think the, to me, the $20 a year for the service we get, and it's already a very low rate. I've talked to friends from other communities, they can't believe how low our rate is. But listening to the counsel of Paul and Eileen and my fellow counselors here, I also think that, okay, let's not take too big a bite then, let's go forward. And I support moving forward with a warrant article for just Phase 3 then at this time. So that's my opinion, my feeling.
I'm happy either way.
So you don't need to make a decision tonight or even give a consensus, because Paul hasn't actually finished running the numbers, you know, on what you're asking about those various things, and we haven't presented the CIP. But now, what tonight is, is just to kind of inform you about all that needs to be done, so that you can, we can take your input, answer your questions, and then those decisions can be made based on, you know, because when we originally looked at this, we thought that you would only consider the 13 million. Now we know that you might consider the both, so we can talk about that again. So it's not critical that we do it tonight.
Well, the stick a shark was the big...
Right, that's right.
I'm just telling you, when you do your dog and pony show, you do an Easter egg hunt and touch a truck at the same time.
That's a good point.
That does generate our, the most customers.
Yep.
Barbara?
Do you routinely do tours of the wastewater treatment plant?
We were going to add that at the end of the presentation.
You might want to do that, because...
We welcome all of you, certainly, and we welcome anyone to the plant anytime.
I'll be there.
The best thing, oh, I'm sorry, the best thing that I have ever seen as far as structures are concerned are some of the pictures she's just shown of the actual, not embellished or anything like that, the actual infrastructure and what it looks like, a whole, you know, a whole slideshow of what the infrastructure looks like. Because, you know, I remember trying to sell trucks, you know, we're going to buy this truck, and they'd say, oh, you don't, you can't buy a truck. And then you'd show them the body was all rusted out, and that the, you know, people's feet were going through the floorboards, and they were okay with the truck then, you know? So it's seeing, people are very visual.
Only one suggests you go on a crazy day.
Yeah. And honestly, it's...
A lot of picks underneath your nose.
Anyone who likes equipment...
She's a nurse.
It's like a museum for equipment.
It's all over the lift field.
And that's the stuff we're still running, so...
Yeah, it's perfect.
It's really interesting.
Just to let you know that we do get tours regularly, and it's usually middle school and high school students. Every once in a while, we get the younger kids, but we get, schools will come through our plant frequently. The public, typically, they'll come and they'll come to pick up compost, and then we'll typically offer to them, you know, anytime you'd like, you can take a tour of the plant, but I don't know, there isn't as that, as much interest.
Somehow the interest...
It bays pretty quickly.
As part of your campaign, I hope you guys, and I think you used it for the garage, is use our cable TV.
Absolutely.
Walk through and, you know, if people can't walk, physically come down and walk through, do the tour on TV, too.
Good idea.
And just one real fast story, when Dean Shankle was town manager, he had been to Ukraine a couple times teaching, and he brought a Ukrainian delegation here. So Fidelity gave us a great tour of their operations, Anheuser-Busch fed us lunch and gave us a great tour of their operations, and wastewater, who had just won awards, was giving a tour of these folks from Ukraine in their weak, weak English, they're going, okay, we can go now.
[laughter]
Because, and I think it smelled worse in those days than it does today, but...
It doesn't smell that bad.
We can go now.
[inaudible]
So, sorry about that.
One thing I do want to point out is, we do have, I have some links at the bottom here that I wasn't able to access, but we can also give you a virtual tour of the plant as well. So we have video of, and that's what we would use, the TV here, to give virtual tours of the plant.
Excellent, very good. All right, you have a general idea, I'm sure. All right, well said. All right. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda minutes, looking to approve the minutes from October 25th and November 1st. Where are you, Bill Boyd?
I'd like to move the minutes to October 25th as written.
Nancy, you have to turn the mic on.
I'll repeat. See, don't tell Tom that I did that, okay? I've been pretty good, except for just right now. I'd like to have the minutes from the October 25th, 2018 meeting approved as written. I checked through, I did not see anything.
Second?
No, no...
I can find something.
Okay. Did you say you did have something, Barbara?
I seconded.
No, no, I know that, I thought Barbara said she had something.
Yeah, I did. On page 5, because there's two sets of minutes.
Mm-hmm.
On page 5, line 5, it starts off, "To think the planning board and community development think that Hill will be okay." Is that what they said?
I don't know that they said it that night, I think he was implying it was said at the meeting, but I don't know.
Yeah, that sentence, I couldn't recall what we were talking about, because as it's written, it really didn't make sense to me.
Basically saying, they think it's going to be okay, well, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't really say that.
Because they're going to take two degrees off, is reckless.
Mr., maybe Mr. Melzone said to think that...
I think he did say it that way.
Yeah. So, yeah, but when you look at it, six months from now, it's, we're going to sit there and go, it doesn't make any sense.
And I don't think it was 2 degrees, I think it was 2%, but I could be mistaken.
It's 2% off of the grade of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
2% off of the grade of the road.
Right.
So he's talking about, I don't think that's clearly indicated here, but that may be exactly what he said.
So maybe what we need, can we say then that in parentheses or something, 2% of the grade of the road? So that it clarifies that?
Yeah, 2% off the grade of the road.
Yeah.
Is reckless.
Yes, and I think that depicts exactly what he said.
Because it was an important point, so we don't want to lose the meaning of the point.
Yep. Okay, nothing else on those minutes? Call the question on October 25th minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. November 1st minutes.
I'm pointing to Pete to see if...
Sorry.
I was going to give you the opportunity to that. I was, I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of November 1st, 2018 as written. I was going to give you, Pete, I was going to say, go for it, Pete. But you weren't paying attention to me, but that's okay.
Thank you, Councilor Harrington, appreciated the opportunity.
They don't come around for nothing.
Hey, don't say they don't.
It'll be the only motion I ever make that'll get passed.
Anybody have any changes on these? I checked through.
All right. Call the question, all those in favor, November 1st minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Comments from the press, nobody's here. Comments from the public, nobody's here. Comments from the council.
I'm sure they'll, I speak myself, but obviously the council as well, and wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you have an enjoyable day, hope everyone in the community has a great day, and be thankful for all we have, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
One other thing.
Yes?
If you, they have, the Rotary Club has their Turkey Trot 5K Thanksgiving morning, if you're looking to create a little space to fill later, you know? Which would lead us to the waste treatment.
We will send Bill Boyd as our representative, how about that?
Absolutely.
And that he is.
All right, well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Tom?
I don't really have a prepared thought, but the planning board met this past Tuesday and met and met and met and met, because we had about 10 or 12 items on the agenda. It took us till about 11, 11:30 to finish it. But several of the discussions were conceptual. Edge Brook Heights is coming back to get their CUP renewed and reevaluated. So they were conceptually before the planning board to talk about that opportunity. And the North End program, Temposi, was in as well, conceptually, to talk about a commercial development to go along with the residences that they're building there right now. Flatley, I'm sorry, yes. And those are two of the major ones. There were a couple of other issues that came before the board, many of which were fairly minor, and some of which got pulled or pushed out till future meetings. But we had it this week because we couldn't meet on election night, we didn't have a quorum, and so that meeting got canceled, and a special meeting was called this past Tuesday. But the planning board has the same problem the town council has in November and December of being able to schedule meetings and around holidays and things of that nature. So it was an interesting meeting. I don't know, because we've had some fairly light agendas in the past couple of months, whether there's an uptick coming or whether there's just standard type of, it's wintertime, let's get prepared for the next construction season might be coming in, so. But that is going forward. I know a lot of people have talked a lot about the number of units that are approved and stuff like that. In fact, that came up tonight. And as you know, they're not all coming on at once, and some of them are not even coming on at all, because they've been approved for a long time and they just haven't developed them. So whether Edge Brook Heights down in the south end of town actually materializes or not, we don't know, but we'll see what they come back with when they actually refile their plan.
Very good, thank you, Tom. All right. Voluntary motion.
Second.
Is that to adjourn, I presume?
You started the sentence.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you all.